Good morning. I call to order the February 18th, 2020, meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for regular business. The consent agenda, are there any items that the commissioners wish to remove from today's consent agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing no requests, we will approve the consent agenda as presented. Item number one.
RFA number 127-20, Hermes Healthcare Facility Use Agreement. Rosie Walters, Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Senior Services requesting a renewal of the Hermes Facility Use Agreement to continue foot care. They bring in a P.A. and a couple nurses every nine weeks. They take care of all their own appointments, all of their Medicare and Medicaid or insurance billing. So this is just a continuation. Mike Montoya County Council has reviewed and approved.
All right, is there any discussion? This is another one of those things that we provide over at the Senior Center, and we're happy to be doing so. As an RFA is involved, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action if there are no further.
One question. During your time of remodeling and such, are they able to provide this care?
The only remodeling that we're doing is on the first floor, so all activities that are on the second and third floor have continued.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to know that.
And how many years have we had this with this company?
This is two.
Couldn't be longer than that, because we haven't been in business longer than that. Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the facility use agreement with Hermes Healthcare as requested by staff.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 127-20, the Hermes Healthcare Facility Use Agreement. Further discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion does carry. We'll move to item number two.
RFA number 128-20, Resolution 20-2288, Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Bernie Botson, Deputy Emergency Management.
Good morning, Bernie.
Good morning, Commissioners. There's a PowerPoint here we'll start with, and if at any point during the slideshow, if you have questions, please stop me. Next slide, please. This is a regional plan, and you can see in purple there, that's the north central region, that's our region, and that's all the counties that are listed to the right there that participate in this plan. Basically, everybody that participated last time is participating this time. I'll let you read that. Okay, any questions? This is how they arrive to the different scores. And that's the regional threats and probabilities. Obviously, red is bad, yellow is the metal, and green is lower risk.
I don't know how clear that is on the screen for the viewers, but it's things like tornadoes and extreme temperature, flood, et cetera, national disasters.
These are the benefits of adopting the Hazard Mitigation Plan that we adopted last time also.
Are there some counties that don't do this?
Not in our region. Everybody signed on this time and the previous time, because the state's paying for the whole plan, for the whole state, so we didn't have to spend any of our money to get this plan done.
I might ask, Hannah, Bernie, if you know, but I mean, the threshold amount for Saline County is $210,000.
Yes, sir.
$178. And that is to provide monies for, in the event that we would have something?
So that is the calculation that comes through. If we would have a disaster that happens here in Saline County, we would have to meet that $210,000 threshold before we would even be eligible to have consideration for hazard mitigation dollars through FEMA. So if it was a small type of disaster, and we can't just factor in the cost of aggregates or the cost of road damage, there's a lot of different factors. There's some things that are eligible as far as costs are concerned and some that are not. So it's a very difficult calculation, but that $210,000 is our particular threshold.
Refresh me, though, how we arrive, or how this plan arrives at $210,000.
So there's a lot of different factors that go into play with it. There's a particular calculation that talks about not only just our population itself, but it also brings in our agricultural usages here in Saline County, as well as the different facilities that we have that are what we consider those Tier Two-type facilities for hazardous materials. It's a very complex type of calculation, but it's something that FEMA has used for a very long time, and not just here in Kansas, but across the United States, to determine that threshold.
And I assume then, that having been said, and every county is different.
Absolutely.
Every county is.
Absolutely.
Okay, excuse me, go ahead.
And then the public version will be available on our webpage, and if you look at the red star there to the left of the page, that's where it's going to be. Anybody can click on that and see the entire plan, once it's adopted. Don't make that lie. And that's it.
All right, questions of the Emergency Preparedness Department? Questions or comments?
No, it seems really quick that we're doing this, but I know that you've spent a lot of time on it. I mean, a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff comes.
There was a lot of meetings.
You know, just a four-minute update here, but you've been working on this for months.
And the state and the company that they hired to put this together put countless man-hours, and to get it approved by FEMA, that's above my pay grade.
Right, yeah, right. Well, appreciate everything that you guys did, so.
And how often is this done, Bernie? Five years?
Five years, Hannah, or four?
This one is actually every four years.
Four years.
I think the way that it calculated out ended up being five, but there had to be some discussions with FEMA on that part of it. So as Bernie indicated, though, it's a very lengthy process to go through.
All right, further comments? Once again, an RFA is involved. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2288 as requested by staff.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 128-20, Resolution 20-2288, Regional Health, or, excuse me, Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion does carry. We'll move to item number three.
RFA number 129-20, City of Salina, Digital Orthographic Pictometry, Imagery, and Software Agreement. Judy Polinsky, G.I.S. Coordinator.
Good morning, Judy.
Good morning. I'm here today because you should have a copy of the agreement between us and the city in your packet, and I'm just asking, requesting a signature on the agreement for the city to pay their portion of the 2020 flight, as agreed in the RFA we did back in March of 2019.
So our total commitment for 2020 is 40,800, or, excuse me, 20? Right. And this request for action, we need to approve for the city's portion of it? Is that part of the, is that what we're doing?
That's what you're signing.
And it looks like they're paying slightly more than half?
Yes.
So is there a quick answer to how that formula is computed to come up with that number? Who owes what?
I did that. The city had this amount budgeted for their own aerial photography, so I just asked them if they would contribute that amount to the photography, and we share it. And we need the city photography anyway. If they did it on their own, they would just do the city, nothing else, and we'd have to buy our own city anyway.
So in other words, we would already have this in place, and if they didn't participate, it would still cost us the $40,587?
Correct.
And if they didn't participate, the community then would spend $60,000, $61,000, because they would have to pay their 20 in addition to our 40. So they're using our facility. Looks good to me.
Okay.
Any other questions?
How often does this get done?
Every three years.
Okay. I couldn't remember whether it was five or three. Good.
Well, I do know that now that Monty mentioned that, that when we do see those upgrades from one, two, or three years ago to the next time, there's a lot that happens in that short period of time, so.
And I always set up training on the picto, when the new pictometry comes in, and I'd like to invite all of you Commissioners to come take that class. It's only an hour, hour and a half, and it'll show you just exactly what the software that goes with this aerial photography can do for us.
Is there a test after?
Only with me.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no further questions, any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the agreement for cost sharing of pictometry, imagery, and software between the City of Salina and Saline County.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 129-20, City of Saline, says City of Saline, but should be the City of Salina, Digital Orthographic Pictometry, Imagery, and Software Agreement. I'll get all of that out in a minute. So all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, the motion does carry. Thank you, Judy.
Thanks.
Item number four.
Livestock and Expo Update. Rick Lamer, Livestock and Expo Director.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning.
Before Rick gets going on his update, I do want to inform the public that last week, the City of Salina put forth an agreement of what they wish for us to do at the Expo Center in order to obtain a multi-year lease. We have looked that over, and through consensus of the Saline County Commission, we have sent that back to the city, and we are in agreement with that. The legalities and the actual contract have yet to be drawn up, but it looks like we will have a permanent leasing agreement very soon. I will say that it will be a 30-year lease. It will commence on January the 1st of 2021, and we're very happy to do that, and we're looking forward to getting that project going. And as soon as we have a legal document, that we will get started, so we're happy to get that behind us real quickly. So, Rick, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. This is my fourth quarter report on the Expo Center, Saline County Noxious Weed and County Form. I'll start with the Noxious Weed Department. In 2019, 8,050 acres were aerial sprayed for muss thistle. The balance in the Noxious Weed Capital Outlay Fund is $71,891.45. Deposits for chemical purchases total $94,280.92 for 2019. Expo Center events, I have those on PowerPoint. There were 200, there were a total of 298 event days for 2019 for the Expo Center. Rental fees collected in 2019 were $91,139.16. County form, balance in the farm account is $193,927.73, and we are accepting HAG scholarship applications right now. They're due March 6th at our office. To get one of those, just go to, come to our office, or go to Saline County's website and print one off. Right now, the county is funding 13 of these, two of those being seniors. Moving on to the PowerPoint. This is the Paint Horse Show we had. It's a new event for 2019. This actually moved from Hutch Fairgrounds, and they do plan to come back this year. It's about 80 head of horses. It's a pretty decent-sized show. HAG Awareness Day, this is an event sponsored by Kansas Farm Bureau. They, basically, they bus in kids from surrounding counties, and they spend the day at the Expo Center, learning about farming, you know, farm life, equipment, crops. So they have a pretty good time spending the day there. This is something they've been doing now for probably about 20 years. This is the Wild Wind Horse Show, another new event for 2019 that transferred from Hutch Fairgrounds. It's kind of a working horse show, basically working with cattle and. Salina Regional Rummage Sale, this is their annual fundraiser that they have twice a year. I always think I'm going to find some treasure in there, but I never do.
Some Picasso paintings.
Salina Charity Horse Show, this is the oldest livestock show we have. This was their 70th year. And talking with the show manager, it's only been canceled twice, and that was because of bad snowstorms. The show this year actually benefited Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Salina. Downtown Lions Barbecue and other longtime events, their annual fundraiser. They've been there for over 50 years, so. Flu Clinic, drive-through flu clinic that we had this year, fastest place in Salina to get a flu shot. Doesn't take any time at all. Very well organized.
I'll back that up, that I did take advantage of getting my flu shot through the Health Department this year at the 4-H building, or at the Expo Center, and I was there in less than five minutes.
It doesn't take very long at all. This is Uplander's Banquet. This actually used to be two separate events. It used to be pheasants forever and quails forever. They combined the two, and now it is Uplander's Banquet. So this is their annual auction and banquet. Food distribution, we have about six of these a year. This is put on by the state, and a local church distributes the food. Basically, all you need to do is show up with proof of income to see if you qualify for that. Looks like. Artland Toy Show, largest toy show in Kansas. They take up Kenwood and 4-H Building. Always draws a big crowd.
Wow.
Now, you're not going to find any brand-new toys there, but you'll find a lot of older stuff. Prairie Long Rifle, this is another longtime show, kind of a Wild West fur trapper kind of theme. Everybody's dressed in period costumes. It's always attracts a pretty good crowd. Another event that's been there forever, over 20 years. And the Ficus Christmas Dinner, popular community event. When this first started out, they probably served 200 meals. Now, they're serving well over 2,000 meals on that event. That's including carryout and delivery. Caps Auction, 31st Annual, this is their annual benefit auction. This auction actually makes up 10% of their budget. I don't know why my PowerPoint's doing this. It's always well-attended. This year's auction raised about $56,000. And Senior Center over here doing Meals on Wheels out of 4-H Kitchen, just a couple shots of them getting stuff out the door over there. It was a very smooth transition, no problems at all. Coming up, couple weeks, Equifest 2020. All the vendor space and booths are sold out. Been getting a lot of calls about ticket sales. They will not start ticket sales till March 6th, and the only place you can get them is at Tony's Event Center box office. It's $15 a day, or $35 for three days. I just hope the weather warmed up. Plans for March, of course, Equifest. We have the Kansas Contractor Safety Maintenance Expo that will take over our area, and Tony's Pizza Event Center. Couple days of Carden Circus, and of course, the week of Mid-America Farm Show, so. Busy week in March, or busy month, excuse me. And then just another reminder, on the HAG scholarship, save your parents' money and come pick up an application.
Okay. I would like to comment on the rentals collected. That, it looks to me like it's just roughly in my head about a 10% or 11% increase over 2018.
I'd say about 10% over 2018.
So that's nice to see that part of it, too, but that also means that the place is getting used more and more and more. So again, that goes back to the first part of your presentation, and we're very happy to be participating in this and getting this Expo Center lease agreement behind us and get started on our end of it, from the aesthetic improvements which the city has requested and which are needed. You know, we recognize that, and we're happy to do it, so. All right, well, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? I'm sorry?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move to item number five.
RFA number 130-20, Kip Sewer District Number One, Wastewater Operator Agreement and Environmental Service Contract. Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request to enter into a three-year maintenance agreement with a company called Hickman Environmental Service for pump station maintenance with the Kip Sewer District. Also with that, the three-year maintenance agreement with Mr. Pat Weller is also due for review. In discussions with Mr. Weller, he had actually presented this possibility of contracting with Hickman Environmental Service for the operation, for the maintenance on the pumps, and also had agreed to modify his agreement to reduce his monthly service fee by $50. It actually worked out from a timing perspective because his contract was due for review anyways. So Mr. Weller has agreed to reduce his monthly fees by $50. That would take his fee down to $265.18 every month, and then the cost for the yearly maintenance on the pump stations at the Kip Sewer District with Hickman Environmental is a cost of $1,000. So these particular fees do come out of the operations funds for the Kip Sewer, so there really isn't much of a huge budget impact. There's enough in there to be able to accommodate appropriately that $1,000 fee through Hickman, and then as well as the monthly operator agreement with Mr. Pat Weller. Obviously, the Kip Sewer was installed in 2009, so it is very important that we make sure that the pumps and the site is kept up properly. The Hickman Environmental certainly specializes in this type of maintenance, so certainly make the recommendation to enter into the agreement with Hickman, and then also make the modifications for Mr. Pat Weller's operator agreement.
Hannah, the Kip Sewer District and their budget, is that a fall upon the county's general fund, or is that assessed in the local area? How's that put together?
So that particular project itself was funded through not only the Community Development Block grant portion of it, but then also certain taxes that are levied on those particular properties for the improvement of that Kip Sewer project. So the homeowners there pay for monthly service fees and everything like that, so there are certain taxes that are levied specifically for that area for use of that sewer.
So in other words, their, the annual budget of the Kip Sewer District is taxed to the local people that benefit from this?
That is correct.
Okay. There are questions or comments from Commissioners?
It looks like this would be a net $400 expense.
Yes. We do, and like I said, we do certainly have a little bit of an appropriate cushion in the Kip Sewer operator budget itself to accommodate for certain things, so this is certainly something that is certainly within line with what is necessary for the continued operation of this.
Was there a service agreement, maintenance service agreement in place prior to this with any?
No, there was not. Like I said, Mr. Pat Weller had brought me this, with Hickman Environmental Service had brought this request to me. Certainly makes sense on his end. He is not a specialized person with pumps and pump maintenance, but he certainly is the operator there, so certainly trust his judgment as what is best for that operation. But this will be the first time that we've actually had regular maintenance on the pumps.
Well, I agree that that is something that covers us on the back end, too, that we have a professional organization involved in this type of endeavor, because there's a lot of bad things that could happen there without professional guidance that could potentially be in the works, so. Further comments, Commissioners? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the three-year maintenance agreement with Hickman Environmental Services and the wastewater operator agreement with Pat Weller as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 130-20, Kip Sewer District Number One, Wastewater Operator Agreement and Environmental Service Contract. Are there further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. We will move to item number six.
County Administrators' Update.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So just a few things. This morning, I'm continuing to try and get out and about and meet folks in the community, so I've been invited this afternoon to a meet and greet for the new United Way Director. Plan to attend that. This week, it will be a focus on legislative events. Obviously, the state legislature is in session over in Topeka, so on Thursday, we'll be part of the Salina at the State House delegation organized by the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. And then on Saturday, the chamber will have their first legislative coffee of the season, so plan to attend that as well. There are a couple of bills in particular that we're keeping a close eye on. Senate Bill 294, which is the, what I'll call the property tax lid switcheroo, they've now amended into that bill repealing the existing tax lid, and then the bill moves to a different model for limiting local property taxes loosely based on something that's done in the state of Utah. So it's less of a problem than it was when it was introduced. A number of folks from both counties and cities testified in the Senate Tax Committee, but it would be something that will continue but it would be something that will continue to try and make better as it moves through the process. And the other one that has cropped up is a bill for year-round firework sales. Apparently, there are a number of folks in the legislature who feel that if the state of Missouri jumps off a bridge, Kansas should follow, so continuing to monitor legislative activity. Finally, just a reminder of our next couple town halls on the Jail Project. Of course, the Commissioners all have them in your calendars, but for the public, our next town hall will be next Thursday, February 27th at 6:00 p.m. at K-State Polytechnic. And then our final town hall on March 19th now has a date and time that have been set, or, sorry, a time and location that have now been set for 6:00 p.m. at the Commons Area at Salina South High School. So that's all I had for this morning.
Questions from Commissioners or comments? Okay. That brings us to item number seven.
Commissioners' Comments.
And I have none.
I have none. A couple quick ones. Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, I visited the senior center to look at the remodel work being done there. The first floor is pretty much destroyed, but speaking with Rosie, the work is progressing, and they are not having any hiccups so far, so let's hope that continues. Saturday, Commissioner Shadwick and myself were able to judge the polar plunge, which I report to the news was quite successful, so...
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. There, I will take the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned. We will have a short study session following. Thank you.